All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Congratulations to our two newly elected commissioners and our newest sheriff. Sheriff Empting soon will be able to officially call you that.
Very soon.
So if all three of you could please raise your right hands and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Janet Macho.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Minnesota.
Of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully execute.
And I will faithfully execute.
And discharge the duties.
And discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
State your office.
County Sheriff.
In and for the county of Clay.
In and for the county of Clay.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Yay! Congratulations. Commissioner Campbell is filling under the weather and he said, "No handshakes." All right, if I could get you each to make it official. Let's just do that. Tell your name. It's no good without signing it. We have two commissioners, Campbell and Macho. County Sheriff Empting.
Okay, good morning. It's 8:30, I'll call our meeting to order. Looking for an approval of the agenda.
We'll do approve with the addition, I think we have there.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Wayland with the addition.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you. Employee recognitions. Steve, do you want to round with your Sheriff Burquist? Dean Winkles?
Morning, Dean.
Dean, this plaque is given to you today in grateful recognition for the 20 years of dedicated service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you for so much, all that you do. The grounds are beautiful always. I'm sure you can work through a huge job.
Yes. Yeah, I just want to let everybody know Dean is that kind of guy that shows up at 2:00 in the morning and during storms and stuff, so I think the crew can agree he is the fast-moving guy and he's hard to catch. We appreciate everything you do for the county, Dean, and he definitely gives us a head start in the morning. I think you worked 5:00 AM shift for 20 years, haven't you?
Uh, yeah.
Pretty cool, so that's a tough shift to wake up.
After 3:30 for 17.
There you go. So, I appreciate everything you do, Dean, so congratulations.
Mark Byer?
Good morning, Mark.
Mark, this plaque is given to you today in grateful recognition for the 25 years of outstanding service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you so much for all that you've done. I think we can all agree in maintenance that Mark is kind of our trainer.
He is the guy that takes the new guys under the wing and shows them everything he's done. I think you did that to me and I appreciate you training me when I started, so I think he's the guy that we all go to when we're stuck and you see him pull rattlesnake out every time, so I think you can only get that with 25 years of experience. So I appreciate what you do and he's hinted at retirement at some point, it's down the line, but when we do finally go it would be hard to choose the bill. Congratulations, Mark.
Sheriff Burquist? Come on up here. He needs to recognize you. Sheriff Burquist, thank you so much for the dedicated service, for the long hours, for the community presence that you've given to Clay County. For the 16 years as sheriff, we truly appreciate all that you've given to the county. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, citizens to be heard. Is there anyone wishing to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move into the approval of payment of bills and vouchers. We have motion to approve by Commissioner Gross.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Wayland. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The minutes from December 11th are presented.
Move, approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Campbell and a second by Commissioner Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you. The State of the County address for 2018. 2018 has been another successful year at Clay County marked by change, transition, and growth. With growth comes increased demands of our workforce needs, department budgets, and our taxpayers. In 2018, we witnessed the culmination of years of planning and collaboration with the completion of our law enforcement center and Phase 1 of our correctional facility. On behalf of the Clay County Board, I would like to again express my thanks to the citizens of Clay County and the business community for your support in the half-cent sales tax which allowed this project to move forward. With your support, we were able to replace the law enforcement center and the oldest jail in the state of Minnesota. The two facilities will meet the needs of our county for decades to come. Through collaboration with multiple county departments and Lakeland Mental Health, the new correctional facility has a first-of-its-kind behavioral health unit. The unit will house two mental health professionals that will facilitate services and programming. The goal of this program will be to provide stability and intervention with a goal of a more successful reintegration back into the community. I would also like to recognize the work of our employees. They put in countless hours to make these projects a success. Phase 2 of the correctional facility has already begun and this phase is scheduled to be completed by the fall of 2019. Our county administrator, Brian Berg, announced his retirement in May of 2018, and on behalf of our board, I would like to thank him for his leadership and vision. We wish him well in retirement. The building maintenance department continues to do excellent work. They strive to provide first-class customer service while maintaining the county property with ownership and pride. Coordination between building projects and maintaining the additional grounds is a challenge that they have met head-on. As out-of-home placements, mental health, and substance use needs continue to grow, efforts at addressing the underlying causes and areas for intervention and prevention remain critical. Community partnerships developed have been instrumental. Social Services has been actively involved in community and statewide partnerships to address the human service needs of our citizens. Social Services were successful in three new grant applications bringing in new services and support to our community. One, the grant funds are aimed at serving adults who face multiple barriers to employment and who need enhanced educational and supportive services to be successful in securing long-term family sustaining wages. Two, implementing and integrating a mental health intervention for children at risk for in-home or out-of-home placement. Three, increasing and improving opportunities for citizens with disabling conditions and housing instability to live successfully in our community. In addition, much work has been done this past year in social services to establish additional mental health services and supports to those incarcerated at the Clay County Correctional Facility. Immediate mental health assessment, services, and supports will increase stability and allow for better released planning for successful reintegration into our community. Demands remain high for services in the public health department. In March of 2018, the Healthy Families America Home Visiting Program achieved national accreditation as a provider of high-quality home visiting services. The process required an in-depth detailed self-study of services, followed by a site visit that included interviews with staff, clients, and members of the Healthy Families Council. Research shows that home visits by a public health nurse during pregnancy and in the first years of life improve maternal and child health, prevent child abuse and neglect, increase positive parenting, and enhance child development and school readiness. The detoxification program has continued to see demands for its service increase. The unit implemented the opioid use disorder grant that was awarded at the end of 2017. A full-time licensed addiction counselor assists the clients with a treatment plan, referrals to medical and mental health services as well as substance use disorder services, and provides follow-up to bridge the gaps for detox to treatment and transitioning back into the community. This past fall, Social Service and Public Health partnered in a grant application that, if awarded, would allow Clay County to better serve these citizens. Clay County continues to contract with the Minnesota Department of Corrections to provide probation services to all juvenile offenders in Clay County, as well as adult misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor offenders. Case loads most often reflect clients who are struggling with chemical dependency and mental health issues, which often leads to other behaviors that cause concerns for their safety and our community's safety. The Minnesota Department of Corrections continually reviews its practices and procedures in regard to client contracts and what leads to reducing recidivism. Agents utilize several evidence-based practices that will engage their clients in hopes of changing behaviors. Agents have received core correctional practice training that provide an overview of how to bring several evidence-based approaches together in an effort to enhance the contact staff has with their clients, which would relate to changed behavior and therefore reduce recidivism. As out-of-home placement needs continue to increase, county departments work closely to meet the ever-changing demands. These demands have put a strain on our juvenile center programs, having experienced capacity issues for several years. In the spring of 2018, the West Central Regional Juvenile Center began a remodel and expansion project that will not only address the capacity issues, but add additional programs that will help to keep youth local, near their family, and with their current providers. Research shows that maintaining these connections gives youth a much higher chance of success. This project is scheduled to be completed in early 2020. The Veterans Service Office continues to do outstanding work by making themselves available to over 3,200 Clay County veterans. A portion of the agency's staffing comes from volunteers lobbying in 1,366 hours in 2018. Staff has continued to provide additional locations of outreach throughout the county with the hopes of better serving veterans' needs. 2018 saw the first graduates of Veterans Court. This program is aimed as an alternative in keeping veterans from being incarcerated, offering veterans additional supports and accountability with the goal of helping them to get back on the right path. The Clay County Extension Office continues to be available to help county residents with agricultural and horticultural needs. This past year, extension staff visited over 90 homes and farms, answered more than 550 questions in the office, and delivered 13 educational program presentations based on award-winning research. The 4-H program offers positive and educational programming across the county for our youth. Currently, there are 14 4-H clubs in Clay County serving over 480 children. Extension has also provided nutritional programming and cooking classes at the Morehead Public School, Red River Rehab Center, Gulf Harbor, West Central Regional Juvenile Center, the Red River Alternative Learning Center, and Bright Sky Apartments. The Highway Department is vigilant at maintaining the 1,600 miles of roads in Clay County. They work closely with our county commissioners, the Minnesota Department of Transportation, and our legislators to focus on maintaining a quality road system that is safe for our public. While the number of road miles has not increased greatly, the usage of our roads has increased dramatically. Forecasting future demands through an ever-changing five-year plan keeps the department on top of the conditions of the county roads and bridges. In addition to the county road system, the Highway Department continues to service most township roads in Clay County. The Highway Department also lends its services to various projects throughout the year to minimize overall costs. The most important issue for Clay County will be continuing to lobby the legislature for sustainable funding for transportation issues. One of the important issues is bridge funding. Clay County relies on the bridge bond funds to service and replace our 100 bridges. Without dedicated funding on an annual basis, it will be challenging to make the improvements needed to our roadway as it ages and the weights and volumes of heavy traffic increases in the county. Solid Waste has had an extremely busy and successful year. Expanding township drop site programs, holding collection events in Barnesville, Holly, and Hitterdall, rebranding and expanding the recycling at the pump program, and establishing a successful master recycling composter class, just to name a few highlights. Solid Waste also continues to be a regional partner with the Prairie Lakes Regional Solid Waste Facility. The partnership is designed to extend the life of our landfill. In 2018, they completed engineering, construction drawings, and an operating permit for our new transfer station project. Solid Waste has been working closely with the city of Morehead in hopes to secure funding for this project in the next legislative session. The Recorders Office continues to look for ways to improve and simplify the process for the public in locating the records they need. One way this has been done is through the continual effort to digitalize records. Kimberly Savage-O was appointed the county recorder position in 2018. She will look for further ways to improve processes while continuing to provide excellent customer service. The county's attorney's office has a tremendous impact with public and internal demands of the county. In addition to prosecuting all the Clay County cases, they draft contracts and review all the county legal documents. They also work closely with the Clay County Commissioners and with Social Services representing the state in both child and adult cases. It has been a year of transition for the Planning and Zoning Department. With the department head retirement and the growth happening in Clay County, the commissioners recognized an opportunity to better meet the needs of our citizens. This fall, a planning and zoning technician position was created. Our board felt this change would allow the Planning and Zoning Department to be more responsive to the citizen permit requests and ensure compliance with permits. The Assessor's Office experienced another busy year. Their office is responsible for an assessment of property by estimating the fair market value and determining the classification of each parcel in Clay County for property tax purposes. The goal of the office is to assess a quarter of all properties each year to keep up to date with market changes. While the assessor's role is challenging, they work very hard at assessing our county properties fairly through mandates set by the State Department of Revenue. Clay County also continued to support a two-year tax abatement program. The abatement program involves several cities and school districts in Clay County. City and county representatives continue to report that this tax abatement has led to new home construction and is good for the growth of our communities. The extension of this program is set to run through 2020. Our technology and information services continue to focus on providing quality customer service to our personnel and our citizens. The ability to offer information to each county department is key in their success. Technology Services focuses on keeping up with the county technical infrastructure including servers, software, and computers, while the Information Services focuses on mapping and parcel layout. Both departments were integral in construction planning and setting up the new law enforcement center and correctional facility technology, putting in long hours to ensure the transition between old and new buildings went smoothly. In addition, this fall, they oversaw the update of the county website, which is now more user-friendly and visually-friendly. While we are fortunate to live in an area with low unemployment rates, this also creates many challenges in recruiting and retaining for our workforce. The county is not immune to the workforce challenges. Public Health, Social Service, and the Law Enforcement Agency are examples of departments where positions can be hard to recruit and retain. These challenges keep our Human Resources Department extremely busy with the duties of bringing in new employees and retaining them, all while meeting the needs of our over 550 county employees. Flood protection continues to be an important issue for the county. County commissioners and personnel continue to be involved with the FM Area Diversion Authority and other flood mitigation committees. County personnel will continue to work with members of the Fargo-Morehead and Clay County communities in finding the best solutions for protecting the infrastructure of Clay County and the Fargo-Morehead area. The Auditor-Treasurers Office is responsible for the collection of taxes, distributions of revenues, classifying tax assessment ratings, paying the county bills, county payroll, certifying our accounting process to meet the governor's standards of acceptable practices. Ensuring that our elections ran smoothly this fall was also a main focus. The election process witnessed the election of two of our county current commissioners. Commissioner Campbell and myself were reelected this fall. Brian Melton was also reelected this fall to the county attorney position, and Mark Empting was elected to be our next Clay County Sheriff. I would like to thank again Sheriff Bill Burquist for his years of dedicated service to Clay County. The Minnesota State Auditor's Office presented its audit findings to the county board on October 16th, in reference to the year ending December 31st, 2017. In the issuance of this audit report, the state auditor has issued an unqualified opinion that the county's financial statements -- an unqualified opinion of the county's financial statements. This unqualified opinion confirms that Clay County's financial statements conform to the applicable accounting standards. The county board recently adopted the annual budget and tax levy for the year 2019. The total expenses for 2019 are estimated to be $89,730,884. The revenue sources necessary to cover these expenses include $32,695,921 in property tax levy, state aids, numerous grants, and services. The property tax represents a 5.14% increase over the 2018 tax levy. Clay County has witnessed a new growth in the tax base of 1.5% due to new construction, leading to the net levy increase of 3.64%. The Clay County Board of Commissioners would like to thank our citizens for their continued support. Our board is committed to being excellent stewards of your tax dollars while providing the service you have come to expect to be the most efficient, cost-effective, and professional manner possible. I would also like to thank my peers, Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Haney, Commissioner Gross, and Commissioner Wayland. Thank you for your service with your portfolios of committees and your dedicated service to Clay County this past year. Lastly, I would like to acknowledge the work of our county employees. You carry out the vision. You do the hard work. You carry out what the board's wishes are. Thank you so much for all of your work this past year. Please feel free to contact any of the county commissioners or our new county administrator, Stephen Larson, if you'd like to share any further feedback or suggestions. With that, I'd like to thank you and best wishes for 2019. All right, item number three is the election of our 2019 chair and vice chair.
Madam Chair, I would move Commissioner Wayland as our 2019 board chair.
We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to elect Commissioner Wayland as chair for the 2019 year.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Haney. Any further nominations? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you.
Madam Chair, before you officially switch, I just want to make comments. This was your first time as being a board chair after four years, and thank you for your leadership during the year. You did a great job.
Thank you, I appreciate that question.
Seconded that motion.
I'd also like to thank Commissioner Macho for her leadership during 2018. It was a busy year for Clay County and a lot of significant changes happened, and she steered the county through some difficult times, so thank you for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, we'll move on with the agenda. Establish board and commissioners' meeting schedule for 2019. The board meets the first four Tuesdays of the month at 8:30, and there are no regularly scheduled meetings on the fifth Tuesday if there are one each month, so.
I would move the meeting schedule as the past has been in the past.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to establish the meeting schedule for 2019. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I want to know that next week's meeting is at 10:00, not at 8:30.
That's correct, Commissioner Gross. Because of an event at the Law Enforcement Center for Sheriff Empting, we will meet at 10 o'clock next Tuesday. Okay, establish board of commissioners, let's see, designation of 2019 newspapers and resolutions.
Mr. Chair, I would move Resolution 2019-01. Barnfield Record Review.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second for Resolution 2019-01. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I would have a little discussion, excuse me, but just a matter of, does all those bills have to be, is that a new thing that all the bills have to be posted on that in amendments?
That was a finding during our audit report. One thing that was suggested by the state that any number over 2,000.
Over 2,000.
Correct, be printed. So it did result in an increased cost for us, but it was something that we did to comply with that recommendation.
Okay, very good. I figured the increase must be an increase in cost and coverage of all that, so, okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-2.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2019-02. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Red.
There was a second by Commissioner Wayland. Any further nominations? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, before you officially switch, I just want to make comments. This was your first time as being a Board Chair after four years, and thank you for your leadership during the year. You did a great job.
Thank you, I appreciate that question.
Seconded that motion.
I'd also like to thank Commissioner Burnfield for her leadership during 2018. It was a busy year for Clay County, and a lot of significant changes happened, and she steered the county through some difficult times, so thank you for that.
Appreciate that.
Okay, we'll move on with the agenda. Established Board of Commissioners meeting schedule for 2019. The Board meets the first four Tuesdays of the month at 8:30, and there are no regularly scheduled meetings on the fifth Tuesday if there are one each month, so.
I would move the meeting schedule as the past has been in the past.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to establish the meeting schedule for 2019. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
I'm going to note that next week's meeting is at 10:00, not at 8:30.
That's correct, Commissioner Gross. Because of an event at the Law Enforcement Center for Sheriff Empting, we will meet at 10 o'clock next Tuesday. Okay, established Board of Commissioner, let's see, designation of 2019 newspapers and resolutions.
Mr. Chair, I would move Resolution 2019-01, Barnfield Record Review.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second for Resolution 2019-01. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
I would add a little discussion, excuse me, but just a matter of, does all those bills have to be, is that a new thing that all the bills have to be posted on that in amendments?
That was a finding during our audit report, one thing that was suggested by the state that any number, over 2,000?
Over 2,000.
Correct, be printed. So it did result in an increased cost for us, but it was something that we did to comply with that recommendation.
Okay, very good. I figured the increase must be an increase in cost and coverage of all that, so, okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2019-02. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Resolution 2019-03.
I'd be motion to approve 2019-03.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Resolution 2019-04.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to accept Resolution 2019-04.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay.
One item in discussion, how do we notify everybody? I mean, do they know which newspaper to go to for each thing, or is, they just go through the website to find out which newspaper to go to? I mean, we publish different things in four different newspapers. How do our citizens know which newspaper? Do you have to subscribe to all of them?
No, they are aware, we have the information on their website, so we're able to know where they can go.
Okay, that's on the website, good.
The same information would be available to anybody who wants it that comes to the county, right?
That's correct.
I think it's also important just to note that there is a rotation, that we do have a rotation, so I understand your point, that it may be confusing as to where to go for what, so as long as that's clearly stated on the website.
Anything else in that issue? None of your committee appointments? So has anybody had a chance to look at the appointments, assignments, anything that stands out that anybody would like to change, or?
Commissioner, the only thing that I would add, Mr. Chair, is that I know that both Commissioner Gross and I have been involved in the One Watershed One Plan with the Buffalo Red Watershed, and I don't believe that's on there, but I do know additionally, the Wild Rice Watershed is in that same process as well, and so they're looking to have some sort of representation on that. If Commissioner, I assume since Commissioner Gross has been represented on that, if he would like to continue on that, and I would be his alternate, I'd be fine with that addition.
Anybody agreeable for that?
Yes.
Steve, was there a diversion one too that you sent out an email on?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there's two, a couple of different issues. Commissioner Campbell has been asked to Vice Chair of the FM Diversion Authority, at least for next year, and so we'd like to add that to his portfolio. They're also--
Steve, if I can, I don't, I think that's covered already by the diversion, you know, just the diversion authority itself. I just think the, you know, both the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Diversion Authority serve on the executive committee, which has quite a few more meetings, so just, you know, just to be aware that we didn't have anybody from the county this last year on the executive committee, and so it's just going to have a little bit more time, so. I'm glad that I'm not going to be on the personal issues committee anymore because of that. Not that I don't like being on that committee.
Mr. Chair, the second piece of that is, we'll be looking at establishing a Minnesota Diversion Authority JPA Committee here early in 2018, and my understanding will be is that we'll have Commissioner Campbell and yourself as representatives on that authority.
Okay. Anything else? Do you want to approve this now, or do you want to wait till next week so we have a chance to, okay, something else comes up?
Let's, if you don't mind, wait a week. I want to make sure that, we've added a lot in the last year that they're all included in this, if you don't mind.
Colleen has made an effort to keep up with those updates, but that would be certainly fine.
So I think what, maybe for Colleen, I think if you, we just want to show that as another FM diversion, and you can just call it FM diversion-JPA, I think that would cover one. That's yet to be, it's in the process of being formed, but it might be formed sometime in a month, so.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, the drug part, we're not doing that this week.
That's correct.
Number eight, request for approval of sheriff's office, 2019 vehicles and equipment. First time we get to say no to them.
Congratulations on your appointment, Chair.
Morning, thank you for having us this morning. See, we're into wanting to finish up our 2019 vehicle orders. As you recall, September, we came to you, we did order eight of our utility vehicles because the price of those were going up, and we wanted to try and conserve some cash and some money at that point, which we were able to do so. Now we're just kind of finishing up the order with two additional vehicles, one being warrants and transports vehicle, and the other being for our Metro Street Crimes Unit. We do have current funds available for that. Our available funds in Internal Services, about $46,976 for the two vehicles, we would need an additional roughly a few hundred dollars for that, but the equipment costs and some other costs are substantial on here. We are requesting an additional $28,909. This would come out of Internal Service. We do have the funds available in Internal Service, which we are thankful for. And once again, county board, thank you for setting that up years ago, because it is a very good thing to have. Some of the additional costs that are coming out of there, we're going to be doing in-car tablets, one for warrants and ones for my car. We'll have to also graphic the new squad cars. They're about $2,800 to graphic five of them. And then we have to register through the state of Minnesota for licensing. That's going to be an additional $8,700 for five vehicles, because five of them will be unmarked vehicles for investigations, warrants and transports, and administration. So to be in compliance with state law, we do have to have regular license plates on those as well. The remainder would be for the vehicles, equipment for our mark patrol fleet. The price of those have gone up, and speaking with our vendor, he'd indicated that some of the reasons for the increase in prices is due to tariffs. That's not, of course, the entire reason, but some of the reason is for the tariffs. And with me today is Lieutenant Josh Schroder. He is going to be probably taking this over from me, which I don't know if he knows what he's getting into here yet or not, but I want to introduce him to the board today, his first official day as lieutenant, and he's going to be taking this over in the future.
So one of the board's wishes?
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
Sheriff, you show here on these two particular requests that you have today that you have a, it's a negative $28,909, but was it a couple of months ago that you went through and did the rest of your fleet for, didn't you have like six or seven vehicles at that time, Steve? I think you were--
Correct, we ordered eight vehicles at that time.
Eight, okay.
Yep.
And at that point in time, do someplace in there, do we reimburse the Internal Service Fund with the auction of vehicles, don't we?
We did, and that is in here as well. The amount that we got back from auction was roughly $30,000 from the sale of the vehicles.
Okay, so that showed up, that showed up on the eight?
That showed up in this quote here.
It is.
$98,000, yes. That is part of the, that's part of the funds available, it's $69,516 for funds available.
I don't approve one of your questions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. There you go.
Thank you. On a side note, Lieutenant Schroder did put in for a grant through the Fargo Forest Hometown Heroes Program for roughly $6,500 worth of equipment. We were notified yesterday that we did receive that grant.
Congratulations, thank you.
It's going to be for some rifle optics, some helmets, and also some tourniquets, so.
You can probably squeeze some money out for some bars for them then.
We'll have to try and find some of those somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one agenda addition, a request to approval to accept children's mental health screening grant funds for 2019 in the amount of $34,700 for series, youth, and the child welfare and juvenile justice program areas. Rhonda, come on up.
Thank you, thank you for adding that today. This is an item that generally you've approved over the last probably seven years on consent agenda, and I just missed getting it on there, so I thought I would come and seek your approval to accept the funds. This year, the amount is for $34,750, and it's for calendar year 2019, and we use these funds to purchase children's mental health respite for kids in our mental health system, both in our juvenile justice and that present at social services. So it's a fee for service, we, our staff authorize it as the need arises, and we'd like your approval to accept the funds from the state.
So--
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Great, thank you. This does require a board signature, would you like to--
Yeah, number nine, that's where we're at. Number nine is today's request for approval of selection of market study provider in March 2019. Darren.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, first I want to apologize for not making it last Thursday. Weather was kind of bad, and I've already successfully barrel rolled a truck on Highway 10, so I really want to try that again. So we wanted to reschedule this, if that was okay. So just to kind of give you a little bit of brief history and chronological events here, I'm up here to ask permission to approve the market study provider for this year. Our last comp study was completed in 2008 and 2009, and that was completed by Bob Bjorklund and his company. In 2008, we had, Clay County had approximately 386 full-time and part-time employees, and 102 very-wire employees, a verbatim total of 488. When I last ran the list this year, at the end of 2018, we had 435 full-time and part-time employees and 129 very-wire employees, for a total of about 564. Of course, that fluctuates almost daily anymore. We've done a lot of hiring in the past year. We have approximately 136 unique position titles, and way back when HR was tasked to look at 25% of PDQs per year, and so I've been doing that for the past several years. In September of 2018, I received approval to plan for a market study in 2019 with an implementation in 2020, and so between October and December of last year, I compiled the results, I sent out a survey to all the counties in Minnesota, and received results from 54 of those counties, from their HR departments, and their, what their experience says, were with different compensation providers. So I got 54 people that responded to my survey, which was actually very good. On October 16th, November 20th, and December 11th, we had the topic on the Personnel Issues Committee to bring everybody up to date on the providers that, and the rank ordering of people who liked their provider, or problems that we had with their providers. And on December 11th, the PIC made a recommendation for final selection of the market study provider. Those market study providers, the four finalists that I took to the PIC was Bob Bjorklund, Keystone Consulting, MRA, and David Drown Associates. And what I'd like to do is, after all the evaluation was done and the comparisons, I'd like to recommend David Drown Associates to do our next market study, starting in March of this year. Some of the reasons for that was that their staff is very experienced in county operations. A lot of their staff includes other county administrators and HR professionals. I've worked with them through AMC on several projects. They do a lot of HR questions where we can send questions in when we have issues that we need resolved, and they're very responsive and timely in that as well. They do have a lot more data points, it seems like, when they're assessing positions, and they've received good remarks from other counties that have used their services. They, one of the stipulations that the PIC mentioned is they want to have the market study completed by August of 2019, so we can budget for the 2020 implementation, and they said that they are able to do that. When they send their surveys out to other counties and entities, they have a 90 to 95% response rate, and they are able to include Fargo and Cass County, North Dakota, as well as part of that market study. They will use Fargo, and one of the nice things, when I talked to Tessa, who is at David Drown, she said that East Grand Forks basically did the same thing. They incorporated Grand Forks as well, but they didn't let Grand Forks skew those results, so that they were able to implement and look at those results, but it didn't skew the results, so it made it much higher than it was supposed to be. The one thing that I did like about them was they suggested the idea of doing a PDQ review and appeal process prior to the market study, and so what their recommendation was for January and February were the, we would review all the PDQs within the departments. The department's heads would review the PDQs to make sure that we're including everything that, and we have the most up-to-date PDQs for the comp study. So that may result in less appeals after the whole comp study, or market study is completed. They can work with our point system that we already have, or we can transition to their own, they have their own proprietary system that we can use. If we do that, it would cost a little bit more, but we can decide that later on if we want to change our compensation study point system. They would have to know which counties that we want to use for our comparable counties. Last time we had 16, I think that's a little bit extreme. I've already gone through using the AMC data on counties, and I've selected probably about 12 that would be comparable to ours. I've looked at several different items. I looked at the demographics, taxable market, transportation infrastructure, and county funds. I came up with about 12 that are very similar to Clay County in those four areas, but they will also look at that as well. We would also look at identifying any of our benchmark jobs. Last time we looked at 40 jobs as benchmark jobs, and then, but they will look at all of the jobs as well. And I talked to them, based on our conversations in the PIC, about the benefits issue. We can look at some of the benefit stuff, but probably not as part of the overall market study, but if we see some outliers, you know, we can go into their benefits, because benefits are very difficult to compare between, because there's so many different plans, there's so many different county contributions out there, different, so, and different, you know, some will pay single and families, some will just pay single, so it's very hard to look at. But if we do see some outliers, we can certainly take our benefits and look at theirs and see if there is an offset of that. The timeline, the estimated cost for the market study is $21,000. My timeline for that would be, we would look at all the, and do the final review of all the updated PDQs by January 31st. The departments would have all of that done. In February, HR would then look at any changes that the department heads made to the PDQs. I don't expect any major changes at this point, because most of them are pretty up-to-date as well already. And then the market study would begin in March-- March and be completed no later than July, with a presentation to the Board probably in the July, in the July, middle of July timeframe. So that's kind of my recommendation, is to go with the David Drown Associates for the 2019 market study, and then looking at implementation in 2020.
Okay.
So I'm open for questions.
Is this, are we scheduled to do this every 10 years?
They recommend that a comp study be done every eight to 10 years. We are right at the 10-year mark. As I came here before, when I got the first approval to move forward with this, if you remember back in 2008, 2009, we were in the middle of a recession. It was very easy to get employees at that point. Now, we're almost the exact opposite. We're having a difficult time getting employees, especially like our public health nurses and social workers and that. So I think performing a comp, a market study at this point is, the comp study is much more extensive, it's also much more expensive, and so that's why we kind of decided to just do the market study to see where our wages are in comparison to the counties that are comparable to us.
I think, Mr. Chair, if I may, I think one of the things that Darren found in the work, the feedback that he received, because of the updates that HR has done to our market or to our job descriptions, multiple of the companies that we spoke with said that we were in very good standing there, and so that a comprehensive study wouldn't be something that they would necessarily felt we needed to do at this point.
Right.
I was just going to make a comment that this is something, as you mentioned, has been through PIC, and we really did nail down what parameters we wanted them to look at, how did we feel like we would get the best bang for the buck, and this, this company has a reputation that follows it for someone that really does a great job, but also, we needed to have this done before we were through with our budget, and so to be able to have this completed in the summer was something that really helped to pick this company.
Any other questions for Darren or comments for the board's wishes?
I'll make a motion to appoint the company.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Darren.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Chair, if I could say, I would like to thank Darren for the work. He's put extensive hours into this and a lot of research, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darren. Okay, committee reports. Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday, I attended the City of Moorhead Planning Commission, first meeting of the year, and we were introduced to the new city planner, Robin Houston, and then we had a public hearing, request for the City of Moorhead to rezone property within the Makara Industrial Park. I don't know if you recall that meeting we were at, at the Marriott, where the fellow told us about the shovel ready properties for, and there was a little section that was, an L-shaped section around that Makara Park, that was not part of that for some technical reason, and we recommended acceptance by the City of, City Council for consideration of that idea. We forwarded rather. And then we had election of officers for the year. Nicole Mattson was elected Chair, Matt Liseth was elected Vice Chair, and Nicole Mattson will replace Roger Buescher as a member of the Metricog, the Metropolitan Council of Governments. And then we did some housekeeping on some language in the bylaws, and that was it. And that's my report.
Thank you. Kevin?
Yeah, the only meeting I had was the, an executive meeting of the Diversion Authority Board. That was yesterday, and that was pretty much to discuss the DNR's permit approval and its conditions, and what steps we need to do to move forward. I believe there is going to be a special meeting of the Diversion Authority called before 4 o'clock today, at which time, you know, we'll go into closed session to discuss the legality issues involved with it, and then there may or may not be some action taken, but there's, as far as I know, as of now, there is going to be a meeting at 4 o'clock today. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Ken.
Thank you. Last week, I had a couple of conversations with Barnesville School Board members in regards to bonding, and if they could seek a half some sales tax on something, which is not possible, but our administrator and Lori helped me with that, and then I had several phone calls in regards to some compliance land use issues in Baker. That concludes my reports.
Thank you, Frank. No report. And I had no report. I had no meetings last week. Steve?
Mr. Chair, I just met with a number of department heads, and we did have two department evaluations. One of the things that would request permission, I would like to attend the 2019 Transportation Day at the Capitol with Dave. That would be on February 7th.
Sounds like a plan.
That concludes my report.
Anything else? Hearing none, or Darren?